Councilmember Beckman?
Here.
Councilmember Mongan?
Here.
Councilmember Avasio?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Here.
And Mayor Casas?
Here. If we can stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't think anybody knows, but most of them are wearing shorts due to the hot weather. Just a side note. With that, what I'd like to do now, before you open the mirror, I'm sorry, it is open, is just do a moment of silence for Phyllis Metcalf. She passed away unexpectedly, I believe, a couple of weeks ago. Longtime community member, 40 years as public service. She served on the Planning Commission, I believe, since 2012. She was involved in a lot of things in Cort Madera. Most recently was campaign contributions where she took the lead on that. She greatly assisted staff and even the town council in getting that legislation passed through. So if we just take a moment of silence for her, please. Thank you. Thank you. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and open up media for public comment. This gives anybody from the public opportunity to speak on a topic that is not on the agenda. If you'd like to, if you're virtual, please raise your hand. And if you're here in person, please just step to the podium. And with that, I don't see anybody going to the podium. This point in time, I don't see any hands raised.
Rebecca? I am seeing one raised hand from Roy Wolfert.
Okay. I don't see it online. Oh, I got it. I gotta move over to attendees.
Okay. Just give me a moment to get the timer going, and then I will unmute. Roy, are you able to speak?
Good evening. This past Friday in the morning, I sent an email to each council member. I think it's the content of the email and the attachment, I think, are very important and relevant to the town's mission and values program. I ask each council member to read the email, read the attachment, and I would appreciate, give me a call, and we'll have a conversation around that attachment and other relevant materials related to the town's mission and values program. Thank you.
Thank you, Roy. And I don't see any other hands raised. Rebecca, do you have any emails that came in that need to be read?
We did not receive any emailed public comments for open time.
Thank you. So with that, I will go ahead and close public comment. We have three presentations tonight. We actually have representatives from FEMA, so I'll hand it over to, I want to say the both of you, but it looks like, thanks, we're good.
Great. Yes. Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Nakagaki, and here with me is Serena Trump from our Region 9 office. So greetings to members of the town council, Mayor Fred Cassia, the council members, town staff, and ladies and gentlemen. My name is Michael Nakagaki. I'm very proud to be the branch chief for the Flood Plane Management and Insurance Branch in FEMA's Region 9 office. Now, that covers the states of California, but also Hawaii, Nevada, Arizona, and the territories of American Samoa, Guam, and the Commonwealth of the Northern Mariana Islands. It's my pleasure to be here today to present this CRS rating, I'm sorry, the Community Rating System Class 6 plaque for the town of Cort Madera. This is a very prestigious award that is a recognition that very few communities across the nation have earned. Through your longstanding leadership and your commitment to the planning for protecting against, responding to, and recovering from flood hazards in the town of Cort Madera, your residents are safer and your neighborhoods are more resilient to the damaging impacts of flood hazards. The Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, administers the National Flood Insurance Program, or NFIP. A select flood mitigation program within the NFIP is the Community Rating System, also referred to as the CRS. This is established in 1990, and the CRS is a voluntary program for communities to go above and beyond the NFIP minimums and to be recognized for that work. In turn, these participating communities are rewarded with incentives in the form of discounts to flood insurance premiums for residents and businesses. Additional community benefits include greater public safety, reduced human suffering, reduction of damages to properties and public infrastructure, a resilient community that's better equipped to recover quickly after a flood, lessening of economic disruption and losses, and protection of the natural environment. So the CRS works by providing participating communities with reward points for implementing and documenting specific flood plane management activities from a selection of CRS-defined activities. These activities serve to reduce the flood risk and damage to development within our flood planes. They also increase public awareness on how to protect life and property and promote environmental protection within the flood plane. The respected and independent Insurance Services Office, or ISO, is FEMA's current contractor, and they regularly evaluate and recertify each CRS community. Based on the number of points per documented activity, a community is rewarded with a CRS rating or their class. There's 10 CRS classes with one being the best, and that results in a 45% discount for all insurance premiums. Communities that do not participate in the CRS are automatically given a Class 10, and that gives them no discounts. So. So nationally, within the NFIP, we have over 22,500 communities that participate. Now, of these, only 6.7% of communities, or about 1,520, participate in the CRS at all. In California, that equates to about 18% of California NFIP communities within the CRS program. The town of Cort Madera joined the CRS in 2003 at a Class 8. At that time, it provided all policies with a 10% discount. Now, as of April 1st of this year, 2022, the town has once again exceeded the National Flood Insurance Program's minimum standards, and you are now upgraded to a Class 6 rating. And this results in a 20% discount for all flood insurance premiums. Of the, across the nation, there's only about 251 Class 6-ranked communities at all. And within California, there's only 17 Class 6 communities. Within all of Region 9, there's also only another 24 total, including those 17 from California. As a Class 6 ranking, this means that property owners that purchase flood insurance will save, on average, $266 a year when compared to their standard flood insurance policy. And this is an increase from the discounts that they were already receiving as a Class 7 previously. On a townwide scale, with 428 policies in force, this savings equates to a total annual savings of about $113,000. These savings policyholders could then spend on goods and services within the community and helping boost the local economy. The town CRS program reaches out on several important aspects of good flood plane management. Now, this plaque is a great representation of all of the hard work that the community has done, and it's my pleasure to present it to all of you today as a show of the dedication that you have to making a safer and more flood-resilient community. Congratulations to all of you on the council, the town senior leadership, and your CRS coordinator, Jake Horwath, and your flood plane administrator, RJ Suko. This has been outstanding work over the years to get to where you are today, and very actionable and very clear work to make your community safer. If anyone has any additional questions, you can reach out to Jake. And with that, congratulations and job well done.
You're good from there.
Okay.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate it. I think one thing that you said that is a key thing, that you said goes back to like 2008 or so, when we were like, whatever, rated like an 8 rating. We got it down to a 6. I think that just shows the last, what, 12, 14 years, all the hard work from past town councils, as well as the Flood Board and Public Works, and more presently, RJ taking the lead. Oh, thank you, sorry. That's good. And RJ taking the lead on all this stuff. I just think it just shows how great it's all added up, and it's paid back to our residents, which I think is even better.
Exactly.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you for the time today.
Thanks. With that, we're going to go ahead and move to 3B. We have two other proclam-- I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. Is there any comments from council members first?
I'll make a comment.
Go ahead.
So this is directed to staff, and the thank you. So I did a quick numbers, 10,000 residents, $260 on average savings. That's $2.6 million a year now that this community saves because of the hard work it did. And even at the 8 rating, it was 10%, so it's half of that. So you just made the town $1.3 million in savings through the actions that you've done, aggregated into 10, 20, 30 years. You know, it starts getting very substantial. And those type of substantial savings, I think, should be reflected in future discussion about infrastructure-related flood, so that we understand that, you know, what the real cost is and basically the cost benefit. So thank you for that number, and then also just hopefully we work with you some more and figure out how we can take it to the next level.
Go ahead, Bob.
Just to clarify that, you said $266 in savings for insurance? That's on people with flood insurance policies, right?
Correct.
And you said there's 428 homes with flood insurance policies?
Currently, yes. That's right.
And that's FEMA flood insurance. Does that discount automatically happen, or do they have to reapply?
No, that is the, anyone that has renewed their policy from April 1st onward is seeing it today. Otherwise, it's going to be the next time they update their insurance.
They don't need to do anything. It's automatic.
They don't need to do anything. Yeah, absolutely right. It's all in the system on the back end. So whoever they're getting their insurance through today, when they pass it to FEMA for those rates, it'll automatically be in there.
Great. Thank you.
Good point, Bob. Sorry, at that rate, then it's $100,000 savings. It's not, this is not applied to the whole town.
That's okay.
I like big numbers.
Right. But to note that any of those additional residents that would like flood insurance that don't have today would automatically get that discount.
You can't apply it to people, right? Too bad. Just kidding. Any other comments? Go ahead, Eli.
Thank you, Fred. Thank you, Michael. I just wanted to second your comment and note that I was on the Flood Control Board before I was on the town council. So that was in 2017, 2018, and we were chasing Class 6 then. So it's been a long, you know, it's been a long fight to get to this point. And I think that just, you know, all the more hats off to RJ, you and your staff. You guys have done incredible work. Thank you so much for pushing us forward on this. It's really incredible. And that, you know, 266 bucks in savings, nothing to shake a stick at. That's a tank of gas, right? No, that's incredible. Thank you so much.
Thank you. It all adds up. Any other comments? No? Okay, I'll go ahead and open up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on our FEMA award? I have one hand raised from Jim Andrews. Go ahead, Jim.
One question I have is, what do we have to do to get up to 5?
That is a great question. So there, you know, this is one of the things where, you know, RJ can continue to work with Serena, who is our CRS coordinator in my branch. And there's no single answer to that. As I said, there's a number of activities that you can do in the community. Each one of those has points associated with it. So it really is a choose-your-own-adventure kind of menu. Whereas as you have more activities that you implement at the local level, then all of those points add up. So the simple answer is to get to a number 5, you just need some more points. But then, of course, I understand that, you know, to get those points, you have to implement and document how you're meeting, again, whichever of those activities you would like to implement. And in some cases, depending on which ones you're implementing now, it may be increasing some of the activities that you're doing, but in the same, you know, I'll say same category. So.
All right. Thanks. Hold on. Is there any more public comment? Rebecca, do we get any emails in?
Just refreshing quickly, and no, we did not receive any emailed public comments on this item.
Thanks. I don't see anybody present wishing to speak. We don't have any hands raised and no emails. I'll go ahead and close public comment. Go ahead, Eli.
Good comment. I just had one other question that I was curious about. So we recently did some climate adaptation planning work, and that involved, among other things, looking at, you know, the flood exposure among certain parts of town and starting to really strategize on how we might address that vulnerability in the future. And I was wondering, is that the type of thing that has contributed to us finally reaching Class 6?
Yeah, I don't believe that one was a specific activity that we got credits for. Nonetheless, great for the greater good of flood plane management. And then if I could use this time, I did want to thank, definitely like you said, Eli and others. Flood Board has been instrumental in this for many years. Also want to thank Kelly Crowe from many years ago, who really was instrumental in kind of getting it up a level beyond, and then also Jared Barrio. And then with that, we just kind of carrying the momentum, and we're coming up on a five-year audit this summer. So it'll be a busy year of documentation ahead. And just something else to think about, I know it's, we're all motivated, want to get to the next step. We not only have to gain additional points as we go to the next step, we have to go back and continue to maintain the points that we've created. And so things like flood mailer, annual flood mailers, you know, that get updated and mailed out every year, those are part of getting to Class 8 or 7 that we need to continue to do as we add on additional things as well. So, but happy to analyze that further as we move forward.
Go ahead, Charles.
Yeah. So RJ, thanks for speaking up. With that, so the Stormwater Management Plan, which we recently have approved, will be looking at ways to basically, you know, strengthen our infrastructure. As part of that, will there be in that report our relationship with FEMA and kind of a cost analysis or benefit analysis of those, that point system in ways and the cost that would be to try to hit those targets, or is that a possibility, or at least a discussion point we could?
Sure. I think, so we actually, as of the last couple of years, have worked with a consultant, Tetra Tech, to kind of, they're very much experts in this area, and we have kind of used them as specialists to kind of help us find the lowest hanging fruit, and that low hanging fruit continues to get higher and higher. But we'll do that as we go through the five-year audit. We'll look at what are the next activities we could, you know, attempt or pursue.
Thanks. Any other comments? No. Thank you again. Really appreciate it. Hopefully we'll see you back next year. We'll be down again.
Yeah, we'll see. Great.
Thanks. Appreciate it. With that, we're going to go ahead and move to 3B. We have two proclamations tonight. The first one is, as Mayor of Cort Madera, I hereby proclaim that the month of June 2022 has Immigrant Heritage Month. I encourage all residents to celebrate the diversity of our community and learn more about the history of our nation's varied immigrant communities. And the second one is, again, as mayor, I'm going to proclaim that the month of July 2022 is Parks Makes Life Better Month. In Cort Madera, we urge all residents of our community to personally adopt the spirit of parks and recreation. And we have our wonderful Park and Rec Director, Ashley Howell, on the line, and she's going to tell us all about the activities for July that they have planned for us.
Thank you, Mayor Casas. Again, my name is Ashley Howell. I'm your Parks and Recreation Director for the town. I've also served as a volunteer leader for the California Parks and Recreation Society on the district, section, and state levels. California Parks and Recreation Society, or CPRS, is a nonprofit professional and public interest organization founded in 1946 with over 4,000 members. The mission of CPRS is to provide advance, excuse me, is to advance the park and recreation profession through education, networking, resources, and advocacy. CPRS members are united in their commitment to improving people's lives within our communities. CPRS has introduced Parks Make Life Better in 2010 as a brand promise and slogan. The campaign serves to raise awareness for the benefits of parks and recreation throughout California and to raise the status of parks and recreation as an essential community service. July is celebrated by both the California Parks and Recreation Society and the National Recreation and Park Association, as it typically celebrates our programs, camps, and events that are in full swing. Your Parks and Recreation staff asked that town council proclaim July 2022 as Parks Make Life Better Month, and we hope that you enjoy the July activity calendar that we've prepared for you. So quickly, I'll just share my screen, and we'll go through the key points of the proclamation, and then I'll quickly show you the activity calendar that we prepared, that's in the inside back cover of the activity guides that are mailed to residents and available at the community center if you'd like a copy. And it's also a digital form on our website. All right. Is my screen showing?
Yep.
All right. Quickly going through the proclamation key points. The Parks and Recreation promotes physical, emotional, and mental health and wellness, supports the economic vitality of communities, creates memorable experiences, fosters social cohesiveness, supports human development, strengthens community identity, facilitates community problem issue resolution, sustains and stewards our national resources, supports safe, vibrant, attractive, progressive communities. And Parks Make Life Better Month is to inform citizens of the many benefits of utilizing parks, facilities, programs, and services now and therefore be resolved that the citizens of California recognize the importance of access to local parks, trails, and open space and facilities for the health, wellness, and development, inspiration, and safety of all Californians, and be the further result that we declare the month of July 2022 as Parks Make Life Better Month. And to share our calendar, and again, this is on the inside back cover of the activity guide. So we encourage all of our families in the community to stay local, play local, and get out and enjoy our wonderful amenities. Both programs, we've got the summer concert series listed on there, and other activities that you can do just within your family. Are there any questions?
Can you just highlight maybe two or three activities?
Sure. Well, we've got our wonderful summer concert series at Menke Park. That's thanks to the Community Foundation. There's also included all the bands listing on there, as well as a link to the full band listings. We hope to have the family dances on the 29th and 30th, and then, of course, we are debuting the movies in the park. The first one is going to be on Friday, the 22nd, and that's at Town Park, and that's going to be showing Sing 2. And we're working to solidify JoJo Diamond Band to lead us off for that, and then we'll have similar festivities in August over at Cove Park.
Thanks. Any question from any council members or comments? No? Okay. With that, I'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. Is there anybody from public speaking on either proclamation? Don't see anybody present. No hands raised. Do we get any emails in, Rebecca?
We did not receive any emailed public comments on this item.
Thank you. With that, I'll go ahead and close public comment. Thanks a lot, Ashley. Really appreciate it, and great job and great work.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
With that, we'll go ahead and move to the consent calendar. These are items that are in normal course of business. They don't require further discussion. They can be approved by a single motion. Any member of the town council staff or public may ask an item be removed for further discussion. With that in mind, is there anybody from the council, staff, or the public, please raise your hand, wishing to have an item removed and further discussed? I don't see anybody from council staff. I don't see any hands raised. Do we get any emails in, Rebecca?
We did not receive any emailed public comments on the consent calendar.
Okay. With that, I'll go ahead and close public comment. Bring it back to council. We're looking for a possible motion to approve consent items for A through 4H. Moved. Thanks. Is there a second? Thank you. Any further discussion? Then call for the vote.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mongan?
Yes.
Councilmember Avasio?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Casas?
Yes. And just two quick points. One is congratulation to all those that were pointing to the Climate Action Committee, and also a big thanks to Bob Bundy, who is stepping up as interim planning commission. So thanks on those two fronts. We're going to move to 5A, which is possible adoption of Resolution Number 38/2022, which is approving our town operating budget for fiscal year 2022 and 2023. And this is actually the third time you've been to us in the last month and a half or so. So again, it's all building blocks going up to this point. So I'll turn it over to you, Doria.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and town council members. At the last meeting on June 7th, the proposed budget for the next fiscal year 2022, '23 was presented in detail, and only one change was requested, and that was to put all of the Parks and Recreation revenues and expenditures into its own fund and not have any in the general fund. And so I have done that, which has resulted in approximately $401,000 from the general fund being moved over to the recreation fund, resulting in a deficit in the recreation fund of about $170,000. So a transfer has been included. So the net result of all of that is that the general fund's ending balance has increased by about $231,000, and the ending balance for the recreation will be zero. Previously, it had shown a surplus of about $231,000. And so at the end of all of that, the operating surplus for the general fund is expected to be just over $1.6 million at the end of 2023. The ending balance is projected to be approximately $8.6 million, and about $2.8 million of that will be the unassigned ending balance. And the recreation ending balance is now expected to be zero, of course. And all the revised pages and the revised budget message are in your town council packet.
Are there any questions for town council members? Go ahead, Eli.
Thank you, Doria. Just wanted to confirm that, other than Fred's excellent suggestion to make that one adjustment to the way Parks and Rec is accounted for, there's no substantial changes to this budget since it was proposed two weeks ago.
That's right. That's the only change.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just have one, which I think we may have talked about last time, but just to touch upon it again. Given that interest rates have spiked up significantly, and we could be headed towards a recession, do you do any, when you look at the budget like mid-year or going forward, do you do any scenarios to run, say, if, when I say property tax looks like they're going to be reduced, or, you know, sales tax is going to be reduced, anything like that?
Right. For the property tax, we rely on the county, who is always really right on. I've never known them, you know, to be substantially wrong about that. And they do give us updates, you know, not every month or anything like that. But, you know, periodically, they do give us updates, so we can track that. So we would, I believe, know if something like that was happening. And in regard to the sales tax, we have contracted with HDL, who very closely tracks what is going on, and we meet with them quarterly and receive reports from them. And so, you know, for this year, anyway, and last year, they've been pretty much right on.
Okay, thanks. And a couple of that with, we have reserves also.
Right. The reserves we talked about last time, and the pension trust and the OPEB trust. Yes, that's correct.
Thanks. Any other question from town council members? I'm going to go ahead and open up for public comment. If there's anybody wishing to speak on this topic, please either approach the podium or raise your hand, or you can email us. And with that, there's nobody here present wishing to speak on the topic, so I don't mean to keep looking at you. I don't see any hands raised.
We did not receive any emailed public comments.
Okay, with that, I'll go ahead and close public comment. Bring it back to council. I just have one comment, one suggestion. Just by chance, in the Park and Rec Fund, if we do wind up running a surplus for any reason, I like to see that money stay within that fund and use, kind of go back into Park and Rec and either be used for activities or programming, maybe in the next fiscal year type thing. I don't want them to sit on that money indefinitely and build some kind of a war chest. But just perchance, if there is a-- But just perchance, if there is a surplus in there, and just one thing, quick thing to note, and that is, as far as I know, Park and Rec generates their revenue from fees. There's controls that are in place to prevent, I want to say gouging on fees, which is one. Park and Rec Commission reviews a fee schedule on an annual basis, and this last year, I know they did a comprehensive analysis, and it also comes to us for approval also. So there's that control in place, so fees don't get out of control. So with that, I'll bring it back to council. We're looking for a, either further discussion or a possible motion to adopt Resolution Number 38/2022, approving the 2022-23 budget.
So moved.
Thanks. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Did you have a question, Charles?
Mr. Mayor, can I just, as a point of clarification of what you said, so how this will work, at the end of the year, we'll have a full accounting and auditing of all of our funds. And so, specific to this conversation, if there was a surplus, that would be based, it would go to the general fund as a, as just a process, and then we would bring that to you, to the council, and the council then would have a set of options for this conversation of what you want to do with that. If you want to carry it over and spend it immediately in the next fiscal year, do you want it to go to the, as an example, the Park and Rec Facility Fund? You, the council would decide that as a group, so we, we will bring that to you at the end of the year.
All right, thanks. Appreciate that. So we do have a motion by Eli. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Go ahead and call for the vote.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mongan?
Yes.
Councilmember Avasio?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Casas?
Yes. With that, we'll move on to business items. The first one is, we're going to review or receive an update and provide direction staff regarding potential modifications to the housing opportunity sites for the housing element. We'll turn it over to Adam. Thank you. And there's no motion on this. You're just looking for direction, correct? Oh, thank you.
Okay, yeah, you can put the slide up. Thank you so much. Evening, Mayor, council members. This is an item, as you just mentioned, I'm just going to provide an update really on our housing element process briefly. With the point being really that we're trying to continue this, really disclose public information, a transparent process with how we're coming to determine our housing opportunity sites that we're going to be using to accommodate the required RENA numbers from the state. And and really just talk about some of the public comments we've received since we've last spoke to the council back in February. So, next slide, really just starting with the timeline, just so we can let you know where we are in the process of the very, oh yeah, I can use my clicker. We last spoke in, and came to the council in a joint Planning Commission and Town Council meeting on February 15th, we talked about the nine opportunity sites that were developed along with the community through the housing element workshop process. After, with feedback from that meeting, we went ahead and prepared the, it's called a notice of preparation. It's a SECA part of the environmental review process, prepared the notice of preparation. On March 16th, we sent that out to the community, and on April 15th, we received back public comment. We actually didn't get much public comment. One important letter that we did receive, though, was from Graham Street Realty. That was received on April 15th within the comment period. Actually, in Graham Street Realty was a recent, came into some property, I think it was in December 15th of 202021, and actually owns the property on which we are currently seated, or in one of the buildings that they own, as well as 240 Tamal Vista Boulevard, as well as 100 Tamil Plaza, which is right down the street and is part of the five building and five parcel complex across from Tam Ridge. They noted that these properties, in their estimation, were are good candidates for housing, potential housing development, and would like to be included in our processes, potential housing opportunity sites, with the idea that should prove feasible at the end of this process, they could undertake housing development within the eight-year planning process, which is sort of aligned with what we need to show as part of our housing element update. And so you'll see that was the, the March comments what we received. We continue to do outreach. We've met with additional neighbors of Site One as well. I'm kind of doing this a little bit out of order, but this is just to show 100 Tamil Plaza, you can see some of the information about the parcel size. It is a good size, one and a half acres. Already, it meets many of the same criteria we use to evaluate other opportunity sites through our community workshop process, and similar to 240 Tamal Vista Boulevard as well, which you can see on this slide, also about one and a half acres. And obviously, currently occupied with existing office uses, although this, this site is about 50% vacant, according to the property owners. In addition, we, let's see, I'm gonna, we met with, I want to go back, I'm sorry, I'm a little out of order here, but we met with the neighbors of 601 Tamil Pious, which was Site One. A couple of times, they have provided many comment letters to all of you, as well to the planning commissioners, have spoken at some of our meetings there and raised concerns about the inclusion of Site One, which is the mortuary, the former mortuary on Tamil Pious Boulevard, and met with them to discuss their concerns, which really are about exacerbating potential, potentially exacerbating existing concerns related to traffic and parking in the area, and as well noting that the site is relatively small in size, separated by really two different parcels, separated by a street, and really their feeling was it didn't meet the criteria that we had established for a lot of the other sites. So we've, we've started to address those issues, as noted in the staff report, and I'll get to in a second. But with respect to the timeline, why we're here today is really because on July 8th, what we want to do is release the draft housing element, and we're going to make a big push. We're already doing a lot of outreach now. Martha was out today doing, at a focus group at San Clemente Place Apartments. We've done pop-up events. Additionally, we've been quite a bit more outreach, and we'll continue to do so regarding the housing element in general. But we wanted to have this discussion before we actually dropped the document on July 8th and start a public comment, a 30-day public comment review period, and it be a surprise to everybody that we've, you know, we're recommending adding a couple more sites to that housing opportunity site list. So we wanted to make sure we, we had this meeting here tonight. We were at the Planning Commission on June 14th, a week ago, and allow anybody and everybody who wants to speak about this potential addition to the housing opportunities site list to comment on it, and that we also just are making everybody aware that this, these, these sites, additional sites, staff's intention to include those in the draft document, and so it's not a huge surprise, or shouldn't be a huge surprise when that happens. So that's July 8th. You can see on this slide. We will be coming back to the Town Council, just in terms of next steps, after that comment period, probably on August 16th, which is why we have to have that, that meeting in August there, Todd. Before we send the document to HCD for their 90-day public comment review period. So the processes were on time, we're working through the timeline and as anticipated, and this is just part of sort of the continuing to disclose information and how we're getting from essentially point A to B and to C and to D, and just creating a very iterative linear process here. So we've talked about the sites and the comments we received. These are the two additional sites. So if you recall, we have this map of the nine sites with different densities. You can see these two new sites really fit into essentially the other, have the similar characteristics to the other ones we've included in a long Tamal Vista Boulevard, and really in the northern part of Cordoba, there along, right where we're situated today, around Pfeiffer, Lucky, and Nellin, this particular area. And so we also see these as potential sites as being rezoned to that medium density, 30 to 35 units an acre density. We've talked about 601 Tamil Pious Drive, so I'm not going to get into that, but just for those who are maybe viewing from remotely, just a reminder, that's the Site One. We had some neighbors, as you can see, it's surrounded by single-family home and residential areas, has that unique configuration with two different parcels, sort of an odd shape there as well. Our recommendation, as I talked about, we're going to include those slides, those sites. We'd like to include those sites, 10 and 11, the northern part, specifically the two sites that I've been talking about. And so we would have 11 housing opportunity sites as part of our draft housing element. That would mean adding those sites really to this table, which we've talked about in the past as well. And those, those two additional sites, 10 and 11, are in red at the bottom of this table, and so you can see with the rezoning, we'd actually increase the total number of units that would potentially be part of our housing element to 872 units. Obviously, that's well above what we need to plan for as part of RENA. But I think it's important to note that, in fact, it's better to have, in our, in staff's view, it's better to have more sites than less at this point in time in the process. We're obviously going to send this document to HCD. They evaluate our, the evidence that we, that we provide them as to the likelihood that the sites that we are saying are going to be redeveloped with housing over the next eight years. They will likely provide comments to us regarding whether or not we've provided sufficient evidence to make that that claim sort of believable, so to speak. It's not known at this time exactly what those comments will be, or whether or not some of those sites will pass muster, and so having additional sites at this point in time is beneficial, I think strategically advantageous, just in terms of having to go through this process in the way we have to go through this process, especially with sites where we have owner interest. That's, that's helpful for us to show that actually, look, these, even though they are occupied, there are existing uses on these sites, the owner has interest and is actually stated intent to move forward with develop housing on these properties. So that's why we are recommending including them, and the number, even 872, while appearing large and more substantial than 725, that may adjust and very, very well may, will adjust after HCD review, and what the process is after that. We'll bring those, the site list and the comments back to the Planning Commission, then to the Town Council for final approval. So adjustments can be made after that, depending on what we hear. And that's exactly what we started to outline for the neighbors of Site One at 601 Tamil Pious. When this does come back to HCD, I mean, sorry, to the town from the state after their review, we have outlined, started to think about some potential options and how we could still include it in the site, in the housing opportunity sites list, but maybe not rezone it, or maybe not increase the density allowed, maybe include some new development standards, or remove it entirely, acknowledging that it's, it is somewhat of a unique site, and also it's not, at the end of the day, it's a relatively low number of units compared to the, the other sites that we have, which produce really a larger number of units. So there's, there's, there's opportunities to really consider options with 601 Tamil Pious, Tamil Pious Drive. I mentioned, we, we went to the Planning Commission last week and discussed, this had the same conversation, and the Planning Commission felt that really the two sites should be added. It's, it's actually was, several commissioners commented that was great. It was, it was really a benefit to the town that the, the property owner came forward with, with this comment, given that it does give the town some more flexibility and also some more opportunity to build housing. And they also agreed with leaving Site One in at this particular time in the process, and I think you also did get a public, public comment from some of the neighbors this evening that also, you know, we've, we've met with them a couple of times and just really tried to communicate the process and how, you know, keeping in the, in at this time doesn't foreclose options available to the town with, and how to approach the concerns that were, have been raised. And so really, I've outlined the next steps. We're going to release the draft housing element July 8th, and then we'll come back to the Town Council in August, give you an update then about what we've heard on, with respect to comments, and then we will be asking at that time, well, and noting that we, due to the timelines set out, we will be needing to send that to HCD, but we'll obviously have a discussion about that in August. And with that, just open it up for questions.
Are there any questions from council members? Go ahead, Eli.
Thank you, Fred. Thank you very much, Adam. Two questions. So first, on the 100 Tamil Plaza and 240 Tamil, I was just curious, why were those not identified? I strongly support them being added, but why were they not identified during our initial process?
Yeah, and that's, that's a good question. I think, you know, when staff did our evaluation, we, there were some that were obvious, whether they were vacant properties, commercial properties. We had also been in discussions on a number of properties that property owners had already sort of, either had a preliminary review with the Planning Commission, like 111 Lucky up the street here. We were aware from the Jacobic. So there was already information available to us that either said these sites may be under consideration by the property owners to redevelop in the relatively near future. Or we had heard from, as was the case with the Paradise Shopping Center and the gym over there, that 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 was a great candidate for mixed-use redevelopment and, you know, with an aging shopping center, redeveloping that parcel from a real estate development company that evaluates potential sites throughout the Bay Area. And so some of that factored in to our initial evaluation. And then when we got to a certain point where we realized we had enough, essentially enough sites to meet the number of, of, of units that we need to plan for, we sort of said, well, wasn't really a need to explore further. And, and at the time, you know, we, we recognized that these were existing office uses and maybe a little bit more cumbersome to redevelop, but anyways, that's why we didn't initially include these sites in our analysis or in our evaluation.
Got it. Thank you. And then my one other question with regards to 601 Tamil Pious. Both options, one and two, say, at the end, they include the rezoning proposal could include new development standards related to height setbacks, so on and so forth. And I was just curious, when we talk about new development standards, would we actually like be sort of reinventing the wheel, so to speak, there? Or would we basically just apply the objective design and development standards that we just spent a lot of time developing?
Yes, I mean, yes and no. So we, I think we certainly would pull from the, the objective design and development standards, what we thought was applicable and could be used. And frankly, if we wanted to go so far as just to implement those, that is a possibility that we'll be considering and just applying those objective development standards to these sites. If we did that, we, we, I think, I think we have, still have to do some analysis regarding whether all those are appropriate for these individual sites. I think there's I think, I think we have still have to do some analysis regarding whether all those are appropriate for these individual sites. I think there's. As we talked about, site one is, is a very narrow, oddly shaped lot. And some of the development standards in the objective design development standards may not totally work for that particular site. So we're going to do an analysis. I think we're going to take what we can from there and implement. We'll see how far we can go with that. We, we don't want to, and this just speaks to the objective, sorry, the odds or the objective design and development standards. You know, what we don't want is to make it so inflexible that it precludes potential housing development and it's yet to be fully tested that that. Those can work for every particular site.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
I'll leave up, Bob. Any questions?
Thanks, Fred. Thanks, Adam. I just have a couple of questions. One with Hundred Tamil Plaza, so that I hadn't realized that site is five separate. That hundred is one of the five separate sites. Located there. Okay, okay. And have we investigated whether the other four?
Yeah, so the, the two in the back actually are already identified as opportunity sites. And so we have reached out to the property owners. And those were originally identified to, to the question from council member Beckman. Because they were more warehouse type uses, light industrial, they weren't as intensively utilized. Just through our understanding of. Permits that we've issued in the vast and how they were being used, so. So yeah, those other two sites in the back were, are also housing opportunity sites.
Gotcha. Okay. And then. I just want to make sure I understand the process. So it, you'll submit to HCD. They'll come back and say, yeah, we like this one. No, we don't think this is a good one, whatever. And then you guys will sort of rejigger the list. Along with input from planning commission and town council, and then eventually there will be sort of a final list.
Yes, there'll be a final list. That accomplishes what we need to accomplish in terms of the total number of units. And accompanying that, there'll be a rezoning proposals that actually. Are going to be limited to the list we choose as well. Part of the, part of the reasons why we may narrow it down, if we have more sites than we need, it may not be. It may not be advantageous to do that just from a. From the state law perspective, because if they all don't get developed, we sort of get penalized for not having them be developed in eight years from now. When we go through this again, at least that's how the law is written now.
Even if they're beyond the seven twenty, whatever it was.
So there, there's diff, different incentives. And so some of it just comes down to, and we'll, you know, we'll provide the different options. You know. So, yeah, I do think there's going to be. You know, a likely will be re, we'll have a final list for you. That's not going to include likely all eleven. There is one caveat, so there's incentives to have it as narrowly defined as you want some buffer. For other state law reasons. So there's some buffer you want, but you kind of want it can contain to a certain number of sites that really gets you to your goal and not too much further. On the other hand, there's also an incentive. If you really want to attract, you know, funding through the transportation funds and whatnot, you can be a pro housing. You can achieve a pro housing designation, which is attaining a hundred and fifty percent of your Rena, which would be over like eleven hundred. And something units here with the number of sites you, so there's different incentive structures. Built into the state housing element law and. Anyways, there's, there's options to consider as we move forward.
Gotcha. Thank you. And I know this has been a ton of work for your whole team and really appreciate the effort you guys have put into it.
Bob, do you have any questions? Charles?
So refresh my memory because we've been talking about a long time. So if we designate a site. For this span of eight years, in the future, it cannot be re-designated if it doesn't get developed. As we proposed, right? That is that might correct?
You can, you can re-designate it, however. It becomes by right. There's no discretion once you re-designate it. So meaning that you couldn't have a design review process for development on that site anymore. You would just be straight.
After the years, if it isn't developed the way that we would like it to be.
If it isn't developed right period with housing or, or any other development. Then it, then it becomes.
But by right, if you set it at, say, ten units and then, you know, let, so, so here's my question. If ultimately we had seventy units in the last eight year cycle, this year we now eight year cycle, it's seven hundred. In eight years' time after that, what is the density going to be? And if you don't get a site that is available in this small community. At a preferable, you know. Density that, that doesn't preclude it from in the future being added to the list or forced onto the list at a higher density. But it does create, once it's been identified as a maxing out at that, you, no matter what its developmental potential is in the future.
Well, the densities can change every eight years. You could, you could reconfigure that. But I think the challenge is, and, and is that you're, you could set it at a certain density, but you don't. Then you aren't allowed to have a discretionary process to review the actual proposal. Once it does, let's say it does get developed in that next eight year cycle. You're going to have to just use the rules. It's going to be like an accessory dwelling unit over the, over the, you know, sort of over the counter permit and review.
So, so, and also to clarify, when you say that we lose all discretionary review. The sites that we're currently designating, if it's within this eight years, we still will have some kind of discretionary review to make it so that. The, you know, it, it's applicable, but after that eight years, then they get, basically we lose the right to discretionary review those properties? Or all properties that are meeting Rena number?
If we use those sites again, so.
Okay.
If we use those sites, the same sites again, we could re-designate other sites. Eight years from now, you know, nine years from now.
Okay, all right. So of all the properties that we identified, how many of them are owner interested?
Well, I would say. All but now we, so we have, if we count the eleven. The two that we haven't had communication property owners would be. The Herc rental site, which I forget the address, that's the southern end of Paradise and. San Clemente, you know, where Herc Rentals is there. And the Paradise Shopping Center site, the, the Five Points Fitness there. So those are the two sites where we actually haven't communicated with the property owners. All the other sites we have in some fashion.
And then, so al- also on that, when we identify the sites, do we also look at their current tax base? And, and how much they're contributing to the community versus what we might lose in commercial taxation to residential?
That hasn't been directly part of the evaluation process in, in terms of identifying these housing opportunity sites. We do recognize, we still allow for mixed use and somebody frankly could come in and. Uncertain number of these sites and still build commercial and not residential. So we don't preclude that from happening. So there isn't that analysis done at this point in time.
Just, these are just questions. And then the final, as you said, that once these are designated and it goes through the process of approval. You'll come to us with a rezoning. So is that a permanent rezoning or is that like an overlay that basically after the eight years we could retool? Or is it that it's just permanent? They're actually asking us to rezone the town permanently in those sites.
Well, it would be staff coming to you with a rezoning proposal that matches our housing element plan. And so, I mean, rezoning proposals can always, I mean, our zoning can change. Whenever the town decides it should be changed, there are consequences. Again, going back to state law about if we take a site out or we change the density. We would have to make up for it somewhere else.
But this, this is a, this is a, it's really a request for a pure rezoning for, for, for the long term. It's not just this eight year cycle that these sites will remain with those kind of potentials. Or after that, then could do it without.
Yes, yeah, I mean, I think it's, it's intended to. Rezone these properties to certain densities, you know, now forward is, as they are considered to be, or setting town policy.
So it'd be like an MX, like the MX district, and we'd have a different color. It's not just like a hatch over some other.
Well, we may, we may do it as a hatch, but it's going to exist. So to speak, we're getting a lot of colors on a map, but yeah, no, I, I get, I just, you know, I'm a visual thinker. Looking at at the end.
We're thinking about it the same way. We're like, how do we, how do we actually convey this in a map? But it, it, I think right now we are thinking about the rezoning proposal being an overlay on these specific. Properties that are identified in this housing element. So it would be something like the housing element overlay zone. Right, so it doesn't preclude one use that it already was within a zone. You don't have to basically do this pot, pot marked kind of rezone. Either still like the broader kind of perspective in which it resides, and it also has this opportunity, right? Like.
Yes, yes. I mean, this, anything that would be in conflict, the overlay would, would control.
Right.
So, but you, yeah, whatever's left would still, there'd still be the base zoning would work and still be applicable.
Awesome. Thanks for answering that question.
Thanks. I, I just have a couple of questions. If I can remember the eight hundred and seventy-two, that, those are just for the selected sites, right?
Yes.
Do you know what the total number is we're up to? Because they went through a smotheries of like eighty U's and.
Yes.
Others in there.
Yeah, so we, we have about a hundred, we're going to, the draft will have about a hundred eighty U's projected over the eight year period. And then we have still a few, uh, single family vacant lots that I think we're counting as one unit per. And then also including SB nine lots, just based on the applications that we have received. So I think it's, it's close to a thousand altogether at this point. That will be in the draft.
Okay. And then the, the other question is, have you gotten, and have you heard of any feedback from other towns or cities, either in Marin, Marin or without? About the, what's coming down from the state with regards to the reviews? You know, I mean, are they pushing back on units?
Yes, we are, no. And, and so, you know, what A-Bag has done is they've sort of done an analysis or. Collected a lot of the comments that HCD provided in the Southern California. Cities that are, have already gone through this process with the newer state laws. And so they've provided sort of summary documents of actually the types of most, most common comments that HCD is. Provided to those cities. And. So that's why we're sort of anticipating comments on some of our sites that are non-vacant and those are a little bit. It's, it's a newer requirement. And so we're sort of getting a sense of how HCD is responding to. Saying there's going to be housing on non-vacant sites. So. There's, there's a lot of other comments we're expecting on, in particular, all the policies and programs and meaningful actions related to. Affirmatively furthering fair housing. We're doing a lot of work on that now with county and the, I think. Who was introduced to you, I think last, maybe early last fall. But we're working with the county and, and a consultant who's helping us sort of craft some of those policies and programs. So those will be also, there'll be a whole section. On affirmatively furthering fair act, uh, fair, fair housing. But we're going to have to. In the draft, you'll see some policies and programs about what the town is going to do with respect to those. With respect to that aspect of. State law and, and there's a lot of comments on, on, on those sections or has in Southern California. They were the first to go through it. I think we'll be in better shape frankly than the Southern California governments because, or. Cities because we're able to see some of this. We, we're not the first group to go through this process.
And I, I guess based on some of those comments, that's why we're including, I want to say a higher buffer, because I think the number's somewhere around. Seven, seven fifty-two, it almost seems like we're building in. Almost like a twenty-five to thirty percent buffer on top of that.
Yes, and, and we're in sort of the unique situation where pretty, like all of our sites are non-vacant sites. We don't have vacant land or, you know, frankly, we've talked about the town on land that we do have not being appropriate for this particular cycle, maybe in the next cycle around. But, but. Other cities may have more at their disposal to say, you know, it's vacant and therefore it's, you know, what have you, something's going to be developed there. Our, all of our sites are non-vacant. And so that I, I think having the additional sites at this point in time really. It's, it's, I think we were, we feel comfortable that we were pretty, in pretty good shape before, but I think we're in even better shape to have more flexibility. And to respond to the comments from we, we get from HCD.
Thanks. Any other questions? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open up for public comment. Anybody from the public, where she speak in person? And then if you're dialing via Zoom, please raise your hand, which we have a couple of hands raised. We're going to take in-person public comment first. Go ahead.
You thought I was just a hot resident that came in to get the air conditioning, which now that I know you meet on hot nights, I may be there. I'm Diane Henderson. I'm a land use planner and tonight I'm here representing Graham Street Realty. They are the owners of this building, two forty Tamil Plaza and one hundred, or two forty Tamil Vista and one hundred Tamil Plaza. The two new sites, ten and eleven that are before you this evening. I think it's a great idea to add these sites. I, I am a land use planner who works not only for private parties. But I also work for various jurisdictions. And this round is tougher than it's ever been. So trying to find good housing sites, I think both of these sites make perfect sense. Somebody asked about one hundred Tamil Plaza. And the fact that is five separate parcels, four hundred and five hundred, the two back parcels are on your list. And in fact, those receive their access across my client's parcel at one hundred. So I think it makes perfect sense. For the one hundred to be included as well. These sites are close to schools, to transportation, you know, close. To Smart and to the ferry and, and other services. So I think it really is great. My clients ended up with these properties as part of, I believe, sixty-two properties that they purchased from a bankruptcy court. So in, and they purchased them in December, so they were late to the game unfortunately. But as soon as they contacted me, I contacted Adam who, you know. Couldn't have been nicer and more helpful about this. And we were still within the comment period and. Able to be a part of this. I, I think everyone wins on this. I can tell you, I've been doing this for forty years and it just keeps getting harder and harder. And I, I don't know how the various jurisdictions are doing it this year, because the number, I mean, as you pointed out, the, the numbers are crazy. And it, you know, we're just running out of resources. So I think you're doing a great job. Your staff's doing a great job. After the planning commission meeting last week, Martha connected me with a. Developer who's interested in talking to my client and we've connected them together. So I think these are two likely sites that you will see housing developed on in the near future. So thank you so much. Thanks for all you're doing.
Thanks. Appreciate your comments. And then we have two hands raised. First one is Pat and then James.
Okay, Pat Razzio, you've been unmuted.
Hi, thank you. Just a couple of comments. First of all, I took part in this process and I really want to commend the town for the thorough and extensive. Well-thought-out outreach and the, the consultants did a good job also. And I know that there were a lot of people who invested a lot of time in this and my only concern is that. The one area other than those who would just say, don't build any housing at all. The one property that did have the greatest number of people concerned about it, and I too am concerned about it. Is that Tamil Pious Drive property. And I hope that the town will take that off the list. I mean, it would be a really great way for the town to say to the community that we really do listen when we have you come in. And, and, and do these long processes that we really do reflect your, your wishes and concerns. And I know it sounds like we're kind of thinking of eventually pulling it, but I just think something a little more clear. Would be really helpful to let people know that their time was well spent. And as far as the new properties that have just come in, I think that's great. By all means, embrace those. But let's not go so far overboard. We don't want to be the. But let's not go so far overboard. We don't want to be the leading creator of affordable housing in Marin County. So I think if they've asked for seven hundred, let's maybe give them eight, but let's not give a thousand and then end up. With such demand that we don't want to build everything that is coming our way. So just my thoughts. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Pat. Can you bring over James?
Jim Andrews, you've been unmuted.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm finding my computer again. As I recall from the last time we went through this Rena, uh, process. There was. Considerable debate as to how big a cushion you need. And folks have divided into, uh, two camps. One is. Put in a really high cushion. The other is just put in the minimum cushion, uh, you think you can get away with. And when. We started, when we started talking about, uh, a thousand units. That tells me that. Of that eight hundred and seventy two. Could we pull? You know, maybe fifty, fifty or sixty units out of there. And in particular, I'm thinking if you go through the, uh, various parcels. Figure out which ones generate a fair amount of taxes and pull those out first. You know, the funeral, the, you know, pull the funeral home, because that's ten units. And then am I correct in thinking that, uh? The rental equipment place is fifty three units? So that's just my comment. I. I wouldn't list too many in there because it'll make the state and, uh, A bag think that we've got all sorts of property we can develop. That's it.
Thanks, James. I don't see any other hands raised or anybody here wishing to speak. Do we get any email comments in?
We did get one emailed public comment. Let me reset the timer and I'll go ahead and read it. It's. From Melissa Duggan who says. Good evening. My name is Melissa Duggan and I am a resident of Meadow Suite Drive. I wanted to make a quick comment on the staff report as there was a question that came up. When it was presented at the planning commission last week, one of the commissioners was surprised that no one from our group of concerned residents was speaking up. That public comment for the staff report, especially given our comments to the commission and to. The town council were attachments to the staff report. I wanted you to know that our concerns and interest over the direction of six oh one Tamil Pious and the housing element plan have not wavered. And we have been fortunate to have very transparent conversations with Adam Wolf and Martha Battaglia. As this process has progressed. We are very respectful of all of your time and I don't feel, and don't feel it is appropriate to keep begging the drum and comment in front of you every time the issue is before you. We are aware of the timeline of when you receive input back from the HCD and will be ready to reach out. When you are at a point of considering options of inclusion and or rezoning of this property. When you have full information from the state, please don't think we are absent. We just want to be judicious with your time. Sincerely, Melissa Duggan.
If we need any, any other comments, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment, bring it back to council. We're looking at providing direction. I'm going to split this into two. When is there consensus that we add the two sites as mentioned? Everybody pretty much in agreement on that. Okay. And I'm sorry, Bob. Go ahead.
Yeah. Nice question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Jim Andrews' point. Are we better off having? More than seven hundred and twenty five, right around seven hundred and twenty five, less than seven hundred and twenty five? I mean, I know we had that discussion the last time we went through this, but that was a six years ago, a years ago. So I'm just trying to get a sense for what. From an HCD perspective, because we're going to get, we're going to get another crack at this.
Right. Exactly.
When it comes back from HCD.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think as far as what we send to HCD. I, I don't think that's as critical as what we ultimately, so what, what we do is we'll send it for comment, then we'll adopt. Sort of come back to the council for adoption. Of the rezonings and the actual sites. And then it goes back to HCD for certification. And so it's that second go around is where you're going to have your final buffer or whatever with HCD. So I, oh, yeah. Does that answer the question of?
We're better off having.
I think we want more at, at, at basically our first comment period. And then we can massage how we, you know, how the town feels it's appropriate. And then it goes fine, the final review is to back to HCD for certification that it complies with state law. And that's.
Adam, I'm sorry, just clarify. So we put all the sites on there. You send it to them for review. Just say they come back and they approve all the sites. Before we send it to them for certification, can we drop those sites off then at that point in time?
Yes, that's what we're recommending is that we have the, the discussions about. Yeah. What sites to keep in and what sites maybe to. Didn't leave out, or there's also, um. You know, densities can be adjusted so the numbers come down in a way on certain site, you know, so on and so forth. So there's a lot of options.
I'm sorry. And then the flip side of that is, is that if we did do it, just say the seven hundred number and they come back and just say. For whatever reason, they don't allow one or two sites. Does that mean we wind up doing a back and forth thing with them to add sites? Is that why your?
Yeah.
And everything at once?
Correct. And, and part of the challenge with that is that if we don't include it now and it's part of our environmental analysis as well, that would create a delay. Because we'd have to then add a site that wasn't already analyzed. And so it starts to become. Challenging more from, from that standpoint of it's easier to pull stuff. Like analyze the worst case scenario, so to speak, or the, and then reduce the scope rather than add its scope from an analysis standpoint.
I wanted to piggyback on, on this though, also. When you're removing properties that are smaller, let's say the thirty or fifty, and then you have ones that are three hundred and we get some, like. It, it doesn't give you the ability to round off to near closer to seven twenty five. With a few smaller properties so that we don't have to have a huge, but like a huge buffer. If the three hundred goes out, we're below the number even at a thousand. So it's like having, uh, twenty and a thirty and not excluding all those smaller sites. Does that give you more flexibility in the future to kind of fine tune it once we get?
Yeah. And, and I think, I mean, it may be worthwhile if this is really a, a topic of interest, we can, there's a lot of considerations into how much, it's really a. It's, it's somewhat of a policy. I would say, or as a strategic decision, but it's also a policy, policy decision about how much. Buffer you include. And so there are, like I was saying before. There's now incentives by the state to, if you really want to include a huge buffer, a fifty percent over buffer. You now qualify for X, Y, and Z. And you can be considered pro housing, which gives you greater, uh, when you apply for your grants for transportation funding and whatnot. You're more likely to get those. So. That's one, one end of the spectrum. Then there's the other, which is making it as narrow as possible. And so those are really. Um, and, and there's something right in the middle, which is what we're sort of. Are, are likely going, you know, that's what, that's what we're trying to. Anticipate at this point is likely where we may find that we end up. Is you want some buffer because it, it does matter now when these sites actually goo, do get developed, how many units are developed there? You, you need to have room to sort of allocate those additional units in other sites so that you still can make your. Seven twenty five as development actually occurs over the eight year period, which is. Yeah, there's. Hopefully that's somewhat, I know it's not.
Yeah, I just want to stick, stick on the first part, which is do we want to add those two sites to the site list?
Can I make a comment?
No, go ahead.
So maybe I'm crazy, but if history's any guide, when this comes back. We're going to get some comments from the public, right? I mean, when people figure out we want to add seven hundred and twenty five housing units, we're going to get significant public comment. And the more options that we have, I think the better off we are, right? Because then we can have the ability to say here, yes, here, move this, make this not as big. So I think having more options. Is probably puts us in a better position to try to make this work for us, for the public and for the state as well, would be my takeaway on the whole thing. So.
Uh, Leela?
Yeah, I think, um, having the options, given the number of factors that we need to consider, it seems like at this point, it just makes sense to give ourselves more options. And I don't see any harm in doing that. And we can always, um, we will reconsider it before we make a final decision. So I would support including these two sites.
I see you like shaking his head like this. So, so are we good then consensus to go ahead and add those two, that planning add those two sites? Okay. Then bring it back to six oh one Tamil Pious. Do we want to leave that site on there or drop it off? And I'll be honest with you, for my thing, I could see dropping it off only because we're only talking about ten units. I know we're looking at options, but it's not a lot of units and that could drop down to seven or drop off altogether, right?
Yeah. Can I comment on that?
Yeah, go, no, go ahead.
So one, one thing to consider, and we talked about this also as well with, uh, the neighbors there. Um, and, and the planning commissioners actually, I think, raised this point as well at the last meeting that. In some ways, the, the option two, rather than dropping it off, if you drop it off, there's no rezoning. Actually, it doesn't mean that development doesn't happen there, right? It's still, the general plan allows for fifteen point one units an acre. It is still allows for commercial development there, but you don't have the benefit of potentially of actually. Including development standards as part of the rezoning proposal. So in some ways, the planning commission really said, you know, whether it's. Fifteen units an acre or we upzone it to twenty units an acre. The key is that the residents, I think, will, would, would appreciate. Having more control over the, actually the form that gets built there rather than just letting the general plan control. And so. We, you know, I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying that the neighbors are, are there yet with that. Sort of approach, but a planning commissioners, I, I think certainly felt that way. And I think both Martha and I also think that that middle, the option two might be the best. Answer at the end of the day, you included in, but you actually put more controls on what gets built and you don't maybe necessarily increase the density. Because you're only talking about three additional units than what's already allowed today. And so that's important. There's development can happen there today. And I think that's really important to recognize as part of this process on that site.
Comments? Do we want to leave it in? Take it off, go ahead, Eli.
Yeah, I, um. I don't see it as being particularly important as a, as a parcel to our overall strategy to meet our housing numbers. Um, especially since, you know, thanks to Diane and her clients, we've just been given another hundred and eight units of breathing room and we're talking about ten. You know, we're really, we're talking about a difference of three if we're evaluating between options one and two. And so I think when you, when you look at it that way, um, you know, I'm certainly open to, to. If nothing else, um, you know, down zoning it from, from what has been proposed and taking sort of the, the route that is not going to max it out as we've been talking about. But is going to leave us with the ability to apply, uh, design standards and give the residents, like Adam said, a little bit more control over the development in their neighborhood. So I think that's probably the, the option that I'm leaning towards.
So you're leaning towards leaving it in then?
Uh, yeah, option two. So leaving it in, but, but not zoning it as it has been changing the zoning, or rather, I guess, what are we leaving, uh? Is it, you know, zoning it down to, to seven units rather than ten?
Okay.
Yeah.
Leela or Bob, Leela?
Yeah, I'm in the same place. I, I like, I hadn't thought of that, um, wrinkle that it sounds like the planning commission brought up and that you guys support. And, uh, and that seems like it gives us a little more control. So I would support option two as well.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. Charles?
So. I mean, ultimately, any decision we make is what's best for the residents. These residents have been vocal about not wanting it. Because they fear that it will do X, Y, and Z. What you're saying is X, Y, and Z that is through this process would actually end up maybe being better for them. We have time, we're not actually approving it tonight. We're just keeping it in to continue to have a dialogue be reviewed by the state. And then we still have time to review it. So all I ask is whatever we choose, that basically we see even more communication and verification. And in an understanding that the residents, that there is only a set of options with that property. It's not that you can stop it. So if you had this set of options, which one are you most comfortable with as presented by? You know, the town and the staff that, you know, understand that and what the state's dictating on us. And then that way. We can help make the best decision for everyone. But at this point, I would say leaving it in makes me feel more comfort. Because we haven't vested into it as much as others in the currently that are stakeholders. And so I'd just like to see more dialogue. And if it still is contentious that we have, uh, much more in-depth discussion about the decision-making. When we get there in understanding how to, how to make, um, the right, the right decision for those residents and for the property owner. So, so for now, uh, basically like. So is there, there's, is there an option just to leave it the way is to leave it as it is, right? Is that, I, I don't see the slide, so it's hard for me to go back.
Yeah, I mean, our recommendation is, is just, is essentially just leave it in as we've taught, discussed to this point in the process. At this time, and then recognizing that we're going to have a discussion about this, you know, we started to draft potential options and what that might look like. But where our recommendation is, is really to leave it in at this time. And then have this conversation about which option to go with when we come back.
And that's option two. That was option two that was up on the.
No, well, sorry, the options are really for the future conversation. I mean, our.
Okay, so that.
But.
Those were things that we could entertain, but really it's, do we entertain other options or do we just leave it in?
Yes, I think the, the really, the, 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 the decision. Or the direction or the world of seeking tonight is really, do we want to actually address this now or? In the future, after we hear from HCD.
So it sounds like there's two choices. When we leave it in at the ten units or what I, I think I heard from you, Eli, and also. Bob and also Leela is to leave it in, but downgrade it to seven units.
Adam, Adam is now saying he'd rather leave it at ten.
Our recommendation is, is to, for just for now, understanding that there are options.
The option later to change it to seven or take it off completely.
Well, exactly.
You just want more options.
Yeah. So, and we've communicated this, I think, to, um, Melissa and the neighbors and.
Given more options. That's where I am.
So are we good back to leaving in as ten?
Yeah, that, that's fine with me. And, and then just, you know, take my comments tonight to me that I'm very open to, to downgrading it down the road.
And I think that's helpful. And that's also, you know, the feedback is, is helps inform staff as we go through this process too.
Okay. So we're good. You have direction from us now on both, both?
Yes.
Okay. And again, we appreciate all you guys are doing. I know I've seen you guys at the farmer's market. And once you're out pioning the payment, you're doing a great job.
Be there.
With community.
Come visit us and, uh, uh, it's going to be an amazing booth at the Fourth of July, Fred, trust me.
Are you doing a booth or a float?
Well, we thought about the float, but we're just, we've done, we'll be at the booth, but it's going to be a good one, trust me. Martha's, uh, lots of creative ideas going, so.
Thanks again. We, we appreciate all the hard work that you guys are doing. Thanks. Okay. With that, we're going to move to item six B. Um, this is related calling for an election on November eighth, uh, two thousand twenty two, twenty two for three council members and measure renewing the special parcel tax repair debt. Pair, yeah, paramedic service and request in the county of money to consolidate the election. And we're looking at two parts of this. One is to rescind, uh, resolution number thirty four two oh two two and adopt resolution number thirty nine two oh two two. And I'll turn it over to Amy for further clarification.
Good evening, council members. Amy Accarino, your town attorney. We are asking you tonight to rescind your vote at the last council meeting. Approving resolution thirty four twenty. Twenty two and adopting a new resolution thirty nine twenty twenty two. Um, and the reason for this is the election code specifies the format of the question. And also that you have to put in all of the detail about the tax, including how much annual revenue is raised every year and so forth. And, um, we, we did that, but we feel in retrospect, our advice was a little on the conservative side. And we think that we can provide more information to voters, uh, in the ballot question. So we're suggesting that you adopt this new ballot question to do this. It is a special tax which requires a two thirds vote, which is a high threshold. And so we think, uh, you know. Adding this additional information in, so voters have as much information as possible in this ballot question, uh, would be in the interest of the town. Happy to take any questions.
Are there any questions for Amy? Know with that, I'll go.
I also have Chief Martin on the, the Zoom. Um, if you have any questions about the paramedic tax specifically that you didn't ask last time.
Okay, thanks. Are there any questions for Amy or Chief Martin? No? Okay. Without going and open for public comment, note that we have nobody left from the public comment in person. Um, I don't see any hands raised. We're getting emails in.
Not seeing any raised hands and we did not receive any emailed public comments.
Thanks. With that, I'll go ahead and bring it back to town council. I'll go ahead and make the motion. It's a two parter. One is to rescind resolution number thirty four slash two oh twenty two. And the other one is to adopt and approve resolution number thirty nine slash two oh twenty two. Is there a second?
Second.
Rebecca can be the tiebreaker. Uh, if there's no further discussion. If there's no further discussion, go ahead and call for the vote.
This is just for the first, the first part or both together?
Uh, it's one motion for both.
Councilmember Beckman.
Yes.
Councilmember Mongan.
Yes.
Councilmember of Azia.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lee.
Yes.
Mayor Casissa.
Uh, yes, with that, we'll move to business time six C, consideration and possible adoption of resolution number forty slash two oh twenty-two. This to create a new position titled Public Works Inspector, RJ's looking at me, so I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you, Mayor Casissa and council members. So this is the second reading for consideration of a new position DPW Inspector. And this position is really born out of needs on the sanitary district, which is, as you all know, the sanitary district is a subsidiary to the town of Corder Madera. And is staffed by Public Works. On the sanitary district two side, back in August of two thousand eighteen, a new private sewer lateral ordinance went into effect. And has established four triggers that have led to required inspections. Those are substantial improvements to residences, one of properties sold or title transferred. If you have a sewer, sewer overflow or other malfunction. And if there is a paving project or sewer rehab project adjacent to your home. And as a result, we've had about one thousand three hundred fifty-three private sewer laterals triggered since August of two thousand eighteen. And that's out of five hundred and sixty-six, five hun- five thousand six hundred and sixty-five within the districts, about twenty-four percent. You do the quick math and you're looking at roughly seven or eight inspections per week over that time period. So you can imagine a lot of inspector hours facilitating and reviewing and reporting on, on those. Those needs, and so historically, there were some options by prior staff to consult those out. At a much higher rate, current rate for an inspector of that. Specialty is anywhere between hundred and ninety and two hundred dollars an hour. The other. Option that has been done in the past is to have that performed by higher level and. And higher compensation staff such as associate engineers or project managers. This current vision for this role is really a promotional opportunity where we've taken someone. For a couple of years through. A reach assignment and out of class pay to train them, get them skilled in the inspection. And they're currently a senior maintenance worker, again, working out of class and then kind of give them the tools they need to succeed. Which prevents a value and benefit to the district and the town. Uh, lower costs and also better service compared to definitely certainly the consultant option. And so with that. You do some quick math on, you know, the consulted route and roughly for. We talked about it last time, you know, about twelve hours a week of services, you're, you're getting the same as what you would get for a full-time position. If done in-house and that's really the justification we have here to, to discuss and. About going into all the further details, I think I'll just open it up and see if there's any additional questions since, since last time.
Any other questions?
I just, I noticed at the sanitary district meeting, we'll be considering an expansion of the sewer lateral program. And I wonder if you just had any comment about whether that approval affects, you know, as part of the reason that we need this position? Or if there was any relationship there you could touch on?
Yeah, the, the connection there would only be if. If we don't see that sanitary district overall pilot program continuing. Then that would have definitely implications on this position, right? But so far, it has been very successful, the numbers show the success, right? Almost twenty-five percent of our district has been triggered and brought up to compliance and, or in the process being up. To compliance and, and we'll also show you some of the cost figures of, of what it's meant on the grant side to get us there and, and they're. I think overall very favorable to continue the program.
Any other questions? Know with that, I'll go and open it up for public comment, we have one hand raised, you can bring Jim over.
Jim Andrews, you should be able to unmute yourself.
All right, just did. Down the road. Once we have done most of the work on our sewer laterals. Would the, would the skill set for this person be suitable to, that we could lend them to other jurisdictions? And basically bill them out to say Larkspur or Mill Valley or one of the neighboring jurisdictions. To help to fray their cost.
Yeah, thank you. That's a, it's a good question, so the way it's formatted now, the current person, it's, it's a, if you look at the classification that we've brought. Before you, it is very wide range, it actually covers more than your typical inspector, which often is. Kind of the reporting and review side of permits and obviously the inspection, but this one does those plus also adds. Actually assistance with our maintenance program. So, you know, when we have to go around and do sewer cleaning, which we do, you know. Quarterly and then it's a few weeks out of each quarter, that person can supervise. Report on that, enter it into the GIS database. This person is skilled in water control, maintenance, other things, we have it kind of set up as. A little more of a supervisor, supervisor role. But it's, I mean, it really can do all the things with town. Granted, part of that is because the person that we have identified has those skills and, and I think there's, but you know. Potential and likelihood that someone over time would kind of follow in those tracks, should this person eventually. You know, retire, move on as, as someone will eventually at some point in time, and we would likely train and bring someone along to fill that. You know, fill those same roles, but in the case that. We don't have productive work for someone, then absolutely we would, we would look to share services.
Thanks, with that, do we aim emails in Rebecca?
We did not receive any emails, public comments.
Thanks, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to council for a possible motion to approve resolution number forty slash two oh twenty-two. Move to approve, thanks, is there a second? Thanks, if there's no further discussion, go ahead and call for the vote.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mongan?
Yes.
Councilmember of Azia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lee.
Yes.
Mayor Casissa.
Uh, yes, and with that, we'll bring, uh, head towards the council reports, town manager Todd, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As we head into the summer, I just wanna, as you know, and you've heard from most of them today, our department heads have just been really doing an outstanding job across. Just across all planes of this, this town of our work plan, they've been really attacking it the first six months of the year and I'm just really proud of them, I'm looking forward to the summer. You know, it's funny, I was trying to cancel that August meeting, but we have the housing element, you just, you know, we just have these big ticket items, but I'm really looking forward to. Allowing them some time off and, you know, spend some time with their family and get away and kind of reset and attack the second half of this year, so I just want to recognize. All of our departments in town, they've just been really providing great service and attacking it. Two things I just wanted to give the council a quick update on, our leadership training. With the, with the recent approval of our mission statement and values. Our team is going to start some in-house training across all departments. On really the customer service and what those mission and values mean to us and really incorporating. That in to our everyday way of life, we do that now, but I, I think it's to re, you know, double down on it and really attack it. Lorena and Chris are part of the two countywide teams right now, they've been part of it for the past six to eight months. And we're gonna, you know, lean on them to basically inside out, just start really. Focusing on equity and what that means to us, and we shared some of those examples at one of our previous council meetings. So that's gonna start immediately, it'll be pretty intensive and we'll bring our team back together. And that team's led by council member Mongan, myself, Rebecca, Chris and Lorena. And so we're gonna really just start to methodically put our work plan into place the second half of the year. The other thing that I want you to know that we're working on. It's obviously equity training is very popular right now and. We've identified who we want to, we've entered a contract and how we want to go about the, the, the first round of trainings. Staff-wide, and unfortunately, we won't be able to start those until October. But again, what we're gonna do is we're not gonna wait, there's a whole list of things we can do now and, and we're gonna start that immediately, so. The second piece that I wanted to share is, you know, when we do those proclamations, I just want you to know, right now, we're. It's a little bit of trial and error, but it's, it's, it's ground up, and so when we pass a proclamation for a specific group and we celebrate them, I want you to know that the team. Is reaching out to those groups, whether they're within the town of Corder Madera or outside Corder Madera. And we're, we're building that relationship and we're doing it, not saying at the start of the year, we have fifteen groups who want to get to know, we're doing it month by month. And so we're spending that time as those proclamations come through to really understand who the leadership is in our community. Introduce ourselves and, and see what we can do to partner moving forward, and so we're gonna do it kind of ground up. As we go and it'll be, some of it'll be trial and error, we'll report back to you, but I think it's important. Another thing that I, we're gonna do is we're gonna work within our labor groups and, and our holidays, like what? Why are we celebrating our holidays, what should we be doing, what can we start to do as a community through Park and Rec to really celebrate? You know, some of these holidays and so that, that's coming. Another thing, council member Mongan, I haven't forgotten. You know, six to eight months ago, as we started talking about housing, she sent me something that we're working on and hopefully we can get him here. But Walter Turner, he's a, a social sciences. A chairman at the College of Marin, and there was an article in the IJ a few months ago, you know, about, he grew up in Marin City. And he has a real great historical and thoughtful history of housing and it's not. In Marin County and it doesn't go back to the eighteen hundreds, it's recent, right, it's this, it's in the last fifty, sixty, seventy years. And I think that's an important one to bring him into as we think about this and we think about our housing element to remind us the history locally. As, as this council starts to make some pretty big decisions for our community, so those are the things that your staff is working on. Again, I think Mill Valley from a. From a documentation format as they go, the metric of, of the steps that they're taking and documenting that with the community are, are a little, they're, they're ahead of the game in this county. We're gonna start, I'm working with the city manager there of, of implementing that here, and so we can start to follow our progress. But again, we're gonna get our team together, led by Leela and, and get going, so. We're excited, a lot of things going on and we look forward to sharing that in a meaningful way with the council and the community. And the last one, I just want to, to share with the community, there were some comments on next door, I think staff and council members may have received. Some of the concerns, we had an issue at Cafe Verde and it was over music and I think the. The perception was that we weren't allowing music there and, and, and we were being a little heavy-handed and I just want to share with the council. You know, we want to, we want to support those. Commercial businesses and Cafe Verde is one of them, a close partner, allowing them to, to have people, you know, congregate. You know, eat and drink and listen to music and, and be together, our neighbors to get to know each other, it's a council priority. The issue that we're finding and it all related similar to Manki Park, when we want to do a concert series in the park. You need a permit, we just don't allow live music, and so it's kind of a process thing and it gets lost sometimes in social media. I just want everyone to know that we're gonna work side by side with leadership over the ownership over there, you know, and just ask, hey, what are you doing? What, how can we support you? You need a, a permit, it's a hundred dollar fee. But we can, we can add, you know, your concert series into that one permit and staff just needs to review it and. And go through the process, so it's not something where we're trying to be heavy-handed, and I have reached out and I know the mayor has as well. To a lot of people that had concerns, just to say, hey, no, we're on it, we're aware of it, we do support, you know, things like this, music. For, for businesses, so I just wanted to share that with the community and council, we're aware of it and we're working on it, that's all I have.
Thanks, any questions for Todd? I just have one, on some of the trainings you mentioned, will those trains also be applied to council members, commissions, boards, all that?
Yes, and, and that'll happen towards the end of the year, first, we'll start with staff and all, across all departments, but that'll absolutely, that's the step two. Will be then, all the boards and commissions and council, and then step three is really how do we build that then into the, the community? Right, how do we engage the community and that's gonna be a, a big one for us, so those are the three, the three steps at this point.
Thanks, with that, we'll go town council reports, Eli.
I don't think I really have anything to report, pretty much steady as she goes on all fronts.
Uh, we had a Marin Wild for a JPA meeting. And the big thing that happened was we approved the thirty-eight mile Ross Valley shaded fuel break, so that's moving forward.
Uh, Lea.
Nothing to report, thanks.
Thanks.
Uh, my transportation authority Marin meetings tomorrow, but I did meet with some of the commissioners on that. And some of the planners that are working on the north-south Greenway, the bicycle and pedestrian multi-use path. To identify a few spots where we can make a more concentrated effort to try to enhance it. And near Corder Madera, so making strides like in that field, so.
And then my attended Ross Valley Paramedic Board Meeting, we approved the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three budget. Also attended age-friendly Corder Madera meeting, Lion Share was last, this last Saturday, I think about seven or eight people, seniors participate. That's where the lines go on and help seniors with different projects around their house. And then just a plug for next Tuesday, Mayor's Forum, we're having a central in police authority, police chief, Mike Norton's gonna be the featured speaker. And with that, we will go ahead and move to item eight, which is the draft agenda, just a quick reminder, we're not meeting July fifth. Our next meeting is July nineteenth, and Todd mentioned this before, but usually in August, we don't need it all, but we will be meeting August. Sixteenth, so just make sure you calendar those two on there, and if there's no further, go ahead Rebecca.
Thank you, Mayor Casissa, if I may, I just wanted to point out on the draft agenda that was included in your packet. The presentation that was scheduled, the Caltrans presentation is going to be postponed till that August sixteenth meeting. And one presentation that was confirmed, that wasn't confirmed before the agenda was published was. Your request to have Rachel Kurtz come to council to present an update on the energy program, so that is confirmed.
Thank you. And with that, there's no further business to come before the council, we'll go ahead and adjourn the town council meeting and I will go ahead and call to order the SD two meeting. Can we get roll call please?
Board member Beckman?
Here.
Board member Mongan?
Here.
Board member of Azia?
Here.
Board Vice President Lee?
Here.
Board President Casissa.
Here, and with that, I'm gonna go ahead and open it up for public comment, this gives a, a public opportunity to speak on any topic that is not on the agenda. If you wish to speak again, this is the SD two meeting, please raise your hand. And I don't see any hands raised, and Rebecca, we got any email comments in?
We did not receive any emailed public comments.
Thank you, with that, I'll go ahead and close public comment, we don't have any presentations tonight, we'll move to the consent calendar. These are items are in the normal course of business, they can be, they've been further, they've been previously discussed, they can be passed by a single motion. There's any member of the board, staff or the public that wishes to have an item pulled for further discussion, we can do that. With that, is there anybody from the board, staff or the public that wishes to have an item raised? I don't see any hands raised, any public comment to pull an item?
We did not receive any emails, public comments.
Thank you, with that, then we'll bring back to the board, we're looking for a motion to pass consent items for A through four C.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, and if no further discussion, go ahead and call for the vote.
Board member Beckman?
Yes.
Board member Mongan?
Yes.
Board member of Azia?
Yes.
Board Vice President Lee?
Yes.
And Board President Casissa.
Uh, yes, with that, we'll move to public hearings five A, reviewing possible adoption resolution number oh eight slash two oh twenty-two. Which basically approves the SD two operating budget for two thousand twenty-two and twenty-three. Turn over you, Daria, if there's been any major changes or updates since your last meeting.
Thank you, no, there have not been any changes at all to the sanitary district budget and the, the resolution is before you, it's the same as, as last time.
Are there any questions?
I just feel bad that we kept Daria here like an extra hour to say that.
Any questions? No, with that, I'll go ahead and open for public comment, if you wish to speak on this, please raise your hand. Don't see any hands raised, did we get any emails in?
We did not receive any emailed comments.
Thanks, with that, I'll go ahead and bring it back to the board to. For a motion to approve resolution number oh eight two oh twenty-two, which is the operating budget for two oh twenty-two and two oh twenty-three. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second? Thank you, if there's no further discussion, go ahead and call for the vote.
Board member Beckman?
Yes.
Board member Mongan?
Yes.
Board member of Azia?
Yes.
Board Vice President Lee?
Yes.
And Pres- Board President Casissa.
Uh, yes, with that, we'll move to business time. Yes, with that, we'll move to business time. Six, I'll turn it over to RJ for consideration, possible adoption resolution number oh nine two oh twenty two. Which is amending and extending the private sewer lateral pilot program.
Thank you, Board President Cassisa and members of the board. So. At the end of this month, the four pilot programs are set to expire unless the board chooses to extend them and establish budgets moving forward. There's also some other additional amendments we'd like to discuss and consider with you today. But the first. More simpler. Points today are we're proposing to extend it by two years and we think. The timing of that would. Line up well with our sewer master plan, kind of when we have that document to really fold in a broader discussion about. The rates for the sewer district, the needs on the capital infrastructure side. And at that time, there would be an opportunity to extend Sunset or potentially permanently. Make fees programs permanent by ordinance. And so that's the recommendation is that on that one for a two year extension. And on the budget side, I'd like to share a screen here and this starts to touch on a couple items. As part of this overall discussion. It's up, it looks like it's up on the screen. So these are. Similar numbers that are in the staff report, although I did add one more column here for some. Cost data from fiscal year twenty twenty one. And this really is a breakdown of. What is it has costed us for, what it has cost for each of those pilot programs? Looking back at two fiscal years and what we budgeted. So in fiscal year twenty one twenty two, we budgeted one point two. To five million dollars over the four programs. But as you can see, we only spent actually three hundred and sixty eight thousand in that fiscal year and the prior fiscal fiscal year. Six hundred and twelve thousand. And so. You know, for one, we feel confident that we can fund all those programs as we have for a lesser number and we can discuss. How low to go, but I think. You know, the the goal, I believe, is to to continue to move those projects, those programs forward and and fund them at the rate we've been doing and possibly at a higher rate. And we think that can all be accomplished accomplished at a million dollars. One slight modification that I think would assist with streamline streamline the process and just make it easier to track financially, is just have it be from one pot of money that. Staff has given discretion to apply to all four programs, whether having four specific pots of money. It hasn't been a huge factor till now, since they've all been, you know, well funded. But I think it just would be a simpler approach. So that's one discussion is that. Using that one million dollar. Budget for the next two upcoming fiscal years. Separate of that, it was actually a surprise to me, looking at these numbers that. We weren't fully tapping into the the amount of that we had set aside. And so it kind of did. Start to raise the question of whether we want to increase the overall. Maximum grant amount, which is currently set at fifteen hundred dollars. In all, well, currently it has a fifty percent max contribution, so. Still have, you know, it's not, even if someone had a lower cost facility, this, you would still cap out at fifty percent max. If we were to go to a higher grant value. And this is that category here, the second row down, the PSL pilot program, right? So. In the last two years, we had forty thousand dollars. And eighty eight thousand dollars. And if we divide that by fifteen hundred. We'll just take the average and call it sixty five. We're at. You know, roughly forty three people per year on average that are tapping that program. If we were to add another thousand dollars in max contribution, like you're looking at. Forty three thousand dollars that you could project moving forward. And that's something we'd like you to consider and we think it would be. Beneficial to the overall pilot program and our rate pairs. And then the other item for consideration is, we do have a unique circumstance that the staff has been challenged with for for a number of years and that's. Shared laterals. So a shared lateral is any. Where you have one connection to our sanitary district sewer main and it serves multiple parcels and multiple property owners. And so imagine a shared sewer lateral serving four people. It just takes one person to do a remodel, to buy or sell, to have a, so to trigger everyone. And those are the events that I think are the most challenging because it just is a bit. People are caught off guard, right? It's not this coordinated project effort that everyone in the neighborhood is is involved with, it's. You know, oh, my neighbor just sold, my neighbor decided to remodel and here I am, I have to. You know, come up with these funds. In addition, there's just some challenges in the process. We want to make those moving forward. Formalized. And so we require. Those group of property owners to do a maintenance agreement amongst themselves and then record it with the county of Marin so that it basically runs with the land moving forward. And so again, more steps, more process, more potential for for costs at a higher frequency. And for those reasons, we're suggesting or would like you to consider a higher threshold for those folks. Up to thirty five hundred dollars, but again, still at a maximum contribution level of fifty percent. And. So those are the really the the main items we'd like to have a discussion of and would like you to consider. And with that, I'll I'll open it up for discussion.
Are there any questions? Go ahead, Liva.
Thanks, thanks RJ. I just had a couple of questions. I wonder if some people think of kind of a lateral as just being something that affects your own house. And I wonder if you could talk a little about how it affects the whole system and why it's important for us as a town to support. People improving these.
Yeah, absolutely. And thanks for bringing that up. So. Our laterals, just like our sewer mains and the overall collection system, they take our effluent, which we want to take straight to the treatment plan and and not have any. Detours, no extra stops, and we want to have that treatment. Occur and and be the most environmentally responsible way possible. But when you have leaky pipes. You have potential for for leakage and then you more likely have influent infiltration, which is groundwater. And and rainwater entering the system, which inundates our wastewater treatment plant during in particular. High storm events. And there is. At times when it's so inundated, they have to do what's called. Blended treatment and and some of that effluent does not get treated. A hundred percent as it would otherwise, and it is partially treated when it goes to the bay. May sound. You know, concerning this, this is a regular, you know, regulatory action, it is approved by the regional water quality control board. But we obviously want to minimize that to the extent we can. And this is one of the primary ways we can do that. By improving our pipes from leaking or allowing additional. Water and groundwater precipitation into the system. So it's it's really, the basis is, I think, what you're getting at, an environmentally responsible. Decision by the town or by the district to improve our our pipes.
Any other questions?
Sorry, I just had one more. And can you talk a little, I'm sure it varies on length and various other factors, but I know. So if you're offering someone, say fifteen hundred dollars, do we have a sense of sort of on average, how much of that? Like, what is the overall cost to the homeowner?
You know, it it varies. And and I think. Some folks in this room probably have a better sense of it than I. But um. You know, four years ago, we were seeing for a lot of them, I was seeing seven and eight thousand dollars, but. Maybe the average is closer to twelve these days. And and there's some, I know, you know, some laterals on Christopher Street Hill and above are a hundred plus feet and. I imagine there are going to be more. You know, roughly, if I had to say by the lineal foot, it's it's somewhere between two hundred and three hundred bucks lineal foot. So it often depends. Where your house and lateral start compared to where the main is. And as you can imagine, the farther you are away from the main, the longer, the more costly.
Okay, thanks.
So I have a question for you, and I get that up and lower mixed up, so you have to excuse me. When we do go and do major street improvements. And I'm required as a homeowner to do pressure testing. If my lateral, that's the upper, if from my house to the street, if that fails. And after we place it, that does not qualify for this program, correct?
Right. So as part of our CIP pilot program. We're already picking up the lower lateral, which is from the main to. Either back of sidewalk or edge of roadway, roughly back of curb, if there is one. That cost is likely, in most cases, more than fifteen hundred. So you're already getting. A slightly bigger chunk than you would if you're going out and doing it on your own. So that would could be another reason or justification to up the overall program for the folks that are going about doing the whole ladder themselves. It it kind of balances out the cost closer to, you know, twenty five hundred bucks. But you would still, in that situation, have to do the upper lateral. Completely at your expense if it was part of the CIP program.
Right. But has there any been any consideration to allowing the upper lateral under that scenario to come under this grant program? Because it just seems that, it it seems that if it doesn't. It seems like there's a less pool of people that are going to access the program. Then when we're doing street improvements and we're requiring them to do some, and I get the whole thing about the. I'm going to get mixed up again, the street part of it, but it just seems that me as a as a homeowner, I'm not seeing that, I'm not getting money out of it. Instead, I'm spending eight thousand to replace my. Upper lateral, my part of it, but I'm not getting any money out of this. And I don't know if that's why that number is so low. Because again, it just seems if we're excluding all that, there's a lower percentage of people that qualify for it.
Yeah, so um, so it may not come across that way, but. The reality is based on kind of our bid results, they're actually getting more. And and that's kind of identified here in the top column under the CIP, lower level CIP. Granted, there's a lot of more people triggered, but that's where you're seeing. Three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars and five hundred and fourteen thousand dollars going to those homeowners that are triggered as part of those projects. I would, I would argue it's actually, those people are getting more than. Two thousand or twenty five hundred on a lower lateral to get that whole. Fifteen or twenty feet paid for at a hundred percent as part of the project and only having to worry about. The other thirty feet to their home at a hundred percent their fee. And and we can show that through the numbers, but that that is what we we tend to see and that's. You know, really the the case here.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll go ahead and open up for public comment, anybody from public wishing to speak on this comment or this agenda item, please raise your hand. We have one from Roy Wolford.
Hello, Roy, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Good evening again, Mike. My congratulations and kudos to the staff and Todd and the council for approving the CIP projects. Those, for those of you who were around back then, I know Todd was, I pushed for about two years to get the town to. Do the lateral replacements in a, on a project basis. And there were tens of millions of dollars that were going to be saved in aggregate. By the homeowners, by all of the 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 members of the sanitary district, the customers. So that is tremendous. And I think just a real rough average, and this is two years ago. Would save between five and ten thousand dollars per property owner. So it really tremendous that that program's in place. Now, the other thing I had thought of is on the inspection piece. When the laterals need to be replaced or when the laterals need to be tested. It would be great if the town was looking at. Doing it on a project basis for entire streets so that the, and this is looking down the road when most of the laterals get replaced. So. Consider doing a project rather than having a property owner do it, each property owner doing the testing. It would be great to do it in aggregate in groups. The the other thing is on the wastewater treatment plant. As the town's fees for the the wastewater plant being reduced now. One, because of the lateral replacements and said, can that be tracked? Is anybody doing the math to figure out? If there is a reduction in the fees and then also what's happening with the drought in terms of. Water flow and I'm not sure how the billing is now, I understood in the past, it was by the volume of water was being processed through. So maybe RJ or Todd, if you have a handle on that piece, I'd like to hear about that. Thank you.
Thanks, Roy. Do we get any email comments in Rebecca?
We did not receive any emailed public comments.
Thanks, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. RJ, can you address that at all? Thanks.
Yes, thank you, Roy, for the comments and. I appreciate the one about the pressure testing and we'll definitely consider that and and how that would work with a project. Specifically to the rates reduction and the drought impacts on our fees at CMSA. So we actually are in a. A formula between us, Ross Valley and San Rafael, and it's really based on. Volume and concentration of. The various. Elements that need to be treated. And so those are measured throughout the year and those establish our rates. So yes, volume is one of them. And concentration of of the. Of the material is another, but at the same time. It's, it's three. Entities that make up the whole. So if there's a drought. And it reduces us, it's also going to reduce Ross Valley's volume, also going to reduce Santa Fel's volume. Right? So they kind of all trend that way and therefore the overall. Volume reduces down and we're still playing with a percentage of that reduced volume. And as far as the rates due to. Our progress on on these projects and. And on the. CIP projects. I haven't had. You know, I'll have to look into that. I haven't noticed a significant reduction, but there there likely could be some. We do have an active sewer rehab project and program as well as the the PSL programs. Ross Valley does also have some of those factors more so than. San Rafael. But again, it is, you know, CMSA has their fees to run the plant. And they got to divvy them up amongst the three agencies. And so it's only if you out compete your competitor that I think our rates are really going to reduce if that makes sense.
Thanks. As we close public, I closed, excuse me, public comment, I bring it back to the board for a possible motion to approve resolution number oh nine two oh twenty two. To amend and extend the PSL pilot program. Is there a motion? I'm sorry, did you have a question? I'm sorry, Bob, go ahead.
So RJ, too, on the, you're talking about affluent getting discharged into the bay after big rain events. We can get fined for that also, right? I mean, that's the other big financial cost here that we're being saved from by doing this program, correct?
Right. So there are limitations and within the permit, we are allowed. Certain quantities of blended events. And so we have been in full compliance in in all recent years. But should we not? Be responsible and should we exceed that? Then absolutely, we're looking at fines and sanctions and all sorts of other things.
So I saw Lita got hammered for like two or three million dollars a couple of years ago. I mean, it's, it can be a big number. So this is really critical that we do this. As someone who regularly attends sewer lateral inspections and has seen many videos, which are fascinating. This is a great program and we should absolutely continue to do this. For perspective, Ross Valley has a two thousand dollar grant program that they give buyers for sellers. The average cost typically that I'm seeing now for a civil lateral replacement is about ten to twelve thousand bucks for a regular civil lateral replacement. Those extended shared lines, I saw a house last month that had a thirty thousand dollar sewer lateral. There's one that had a sixty thousand dollar sewer lateral replacements. We're talking about significant money when people have to really. You know, replace a long line. So I think anything we can do to help. Will really be a great step forward. And the other thing that's going to happen is you're going to see the numbers go up because what's been happening is buyers have been paying for these because they've had to. And the market's changing and sellers are going to have to start paying for these and you're going to be dealing with. Elderly homeowners who don't have a lot of cash are going to have to. elderly homeowners who don't have a lot of cash are going to have to replace sewer lateral and they're going to be taking advantage of the program. So I think this is a great thing that we can do and we should absolutely do this. Thanks.
RJ, you have a question. Does your, the resolution, does it include upping? It does?
Yes. Yeah, we sent a revised out yesterday that included it.
Okay, thanks, Charles. I think you got a question.
Yeah, so I, I feel like I'm going to talk bigger picture about all this discussion. I think a lot of home buyers in general are just astonished with this idea that that the government's mandating that they pay these large fees, whether they're selling or buying a home or in other conditions, right? So in some of the ways is to soften the blow, right? And and especially when you're triggering that to your neighbors and a cost that they're going to have to defer, you might have shared infrastructure, but you don't know what their situation is. And then it sours the overall relationship and other things like what are they doing to the house or? And and that's not a community, you know, been like that doesn't benefit anyone socially. And it is, but I also understand that basically us as a town or all towns in California are looking at basically fixing these because traditionally they hadn't been monitored and it was creating an environmental issue, right? But the the thing is, is that it's the cost involved with it. And so, you know, in in my mind, in a, in a sewer master plan, it would be nice to basically defer the cost completely out throughout the fees so that no one person gets hit with any big expense that it's basically blended out over a ten-year period or something. I mean, that's really how I think that it would be more digestible by all of the the town and stuff. The the issue is, is when you get to those sixty thousand dollar hundred-foot lines, because every property is different, it becomes a unfair balance, right? But I mean, I think that at our heart, we all wish we didn't have to really hire private enterprises to come in and do this. And and so that's one of the questions I always is what is there? Could the, could the town or like, could the sewer district do it cheaper or contract and basically give a set price and an understanding per linear fee? You know, because it is a government mandated thing, why can't the government provide it, right? To go to the, to be at the mercy of basically, you know, contractors that are doing other things, subcontractors or whatever it. That's part of the issue I also have with it. And it's also a place where instead of just throwing money at it, you can control cost. Right? And so by controlling cost, you're saving people money as well. And so I guess I feel like we, I would love to have a continued discussion about it. I wish that we didn't even have to have the program that it got absorbed into the fees so that every time someone has the amazing experience of buying or selling a house, they don't freak out because it, I got to say, every time someone buys a house, they're blown away by the cost and the experience of this. And so it's poor in its makeup in general. But the grant program was a way to soften that. And I think it's been successful and I can completely support it. So I guess what I'm saying is I wish we could support it even more. But I had to share that just because, you know, I had my opportunity to. So there.
Comments are always appreciated. When does the program expire?
So it's currently set to expire at the end of this month.
Okay.
And then we're suggesting a two-year extension, which again, I think will line up with the sewer master plan well and the overall discussion of fees and costs and needs for the district.
Okay. So it sounds like we get to go ahead and prove this plan, extend it to two years, and then we can still have continued discussion based upon what Charles comments were. Okay. All right. So would somebody like to make a motion to approve resolution number oh nine, two, oh, twenty-two to a minute, extend the PSL pilot program? So moved. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks. Any other discussion? Go ahead and call for the vote.
Sorry, can I, can I just make one more comment? I just wanted to say I appreciate you thinking about how we can get more people to use this program and continuing to think about how we can do that. I just feel like the money is just kind of sitting there and people should take advantage of it. So thank you for doing that.
Go ahead and call for the vote.
Actually, I have a question for our town attorney first. Does the motion need to specify the version that was revised and made available to the council and the public yesterday? Or councils?
Okay. That's our version. Thank you. Board Member Beckman?
Yes.
Board Member Mongan?
Yes.
Board Member Avasio?
Yes.
Board Vice President Lee?
Yes.
And Board President Cassisa?
Yes. With that, is there a district manager report or any board member reports?
No district manager report.
No board member reports. Okay. And with that, if there's an agenda for the next July near the August meeting, we'll publicize that as we come up with it. If there's no further business to come before the board, I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thanks, everybody.